No, it's fine.
Hi Sarah.
Hi Jim, how you doing?
I expect to be very quiet tonight because I don't think you'll need me.
I'm gonna need you to vote on the first item.
Okay, that's the Barrett and thirty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, cuz James Mitchell is voting on that.
If you need me to comment or if you're looking for comments, just call me, otherwise I will remain quiet.
I see Catherine Howes connecting. I don't see John Benares. Now he was the James.
Sarah, I'm here, James.
Oh, yeah, James Mitchell, but what about John Benares who comes up under James?
Don't see him yet.
This is Catherine Howe. I'm on. I can't get my video to start for some reason, but I am here.
Okay, Brian's here, James is here. I'm here, but I don't see John.
He always comes in late.
No, he doesn't.
He does.
I hope that soda, Brian.
Huh?
I hope that soda or water. It looked like bourbon beer. Ah, Pellegrino, good stuff.
So that's what we drink here in Manchester.
Um, it is seven oh one and I will call the zoning board of appeals to order on January twentieth. Um, I don't see that John Benares is on yet, but I think we can do the first item. With only four people. Um, I wanted to give a little explanation to people about how the meeting is conducted and how we'll be doing things. The, the planning board creates the zoning bylaws, the building inspector is enforcement officer, and the zoning board of appeals interprets the bylaws and reacts to applications that are submitted regarding non-conforming lots, non-conforming properties, non-conforming uses, and whether a special permit or variance should be issued. And basically, a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming structure are lots and structures that existed before the applicable zoning bylaw came into effect and therefore they don't meet the current zoning bylaws, but the courts feel that people shouldn't be penalized by that, so they do have a right to do things to their property as long as it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing situation. Um, we have five full members of the board and one alternate. We have five members who hear each of the applications. In order to, to grant a favorable application, um, we need to have four people vote in favor, so one person can vote, vote against. I usually take a sense of the meeting before we go to a final vote if it seems to be in question. If the, the result is in question, the applicant is given the option of continuing their application to another meeting or to withdraw the application without prejudice. And so the first item we have is an item, a continued application from our December meeting. And in this situation, it's, it's thirty-seven Beach Street and it was a request for a variance for parking where they only had five spaces and they needed fifteen. The applicant has requested to withdraw the application without prejudice. So I'll make a motion on that and then the board will discuss it and, and take a vote. Did you want, did you want, did you wanna say something? No, no. Everyone needs to go on mute. There's a terrible echo someplace. Thank you. I move to approve the applicant's request to withdraw their application without prejudice of the application of Jay Barrett and Company, Dale T. and Linda Chapman owners for a variance under section seven point four point six of the zoning bylaw and other relief is maybe necessary to, to allow for only five space, parking spaces when ten, fifteen spaces are required for a shortage of ten spaces as a result of a change from a residential dwelling to a real estate office use at thirty-seven Beach Street, assessor's map number forty-five, lot number nineteen, and District G filed with the town clerk on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Any comments from the board?
No, no.
Okay, okay. And, and James. James is not, is not. Catherine, I think, you need to mute. Thank you. Yeah, you're the culprit.
Just trying to second your motion.
Oh, sorry. Catherine seconds the motion. Um, is there any discussion? No. Um, then I will take a vote. Jim Dietrich.
I vote in favor.
Okay, Catherine Howe.
Approved, yes.
Ryan Solis.
In favor.
And Sarah Malish votes in favor. Am I correct that John Benares is still not here? Okay, so the application to withdraw is approved without prejudice and I will be signing it on behalf of the board and it passes on a four zero vote. There it is, Adele. So it looks like Jim Dietrich, we will need you tonight. So the next item on the agenda is request for a special permit regarding a change of use at Two Harbor Street. So this is currently the Old Corner Inn at the corner of Harbor and Bridge. So I now will introduce the application of Nicola Sherret's Mac Holding Services LLC for a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief is maybe necessary to, to change an existing non-conforming hotel inn and single-family residential use to a non-conforming six-unit multifamily and a single family dwelling use in accordance with the plans at Two Harbor Street, assessor's map number one, lot number sixty-five, and District E filed with the town clerk on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I'll explain a little bit how we will go through this hearing. We will first give the applicant a chance to explain the project, including his explanation of, of how he thinks this change of use would, would qualify under respect, under the special permit process. The board will then ask questions just regarding the project with no deliberation. I will then introduce correspondence we've received on this application and there's probably between ten and fifteen. I will summarize them and, and what the positions were. Then I will open up the public hearing and allow members of the public to speak. Each member will be limited to speaking once for a maximum of five minutes. Once the public has given their thoughts, we'll close the public hearing. We'll have the applicant respond to the comments and then the board will deliberate, have a discussion and, and ask additional questions of the applicant. Okay. So Mister, is it Sherret, Sheryas, or how do you pronounce it?
It's Mister Heraeus. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board members. I'm Russ Brown, Metaxis Brown and Pigeon. I'm representing Mister Heraeus in this application and I'm going to speak first to take you through how the project qualifies for a change of use under the special permit provisions of the zoning bylaw. I'm sure the board is aware that the Old Corner Inn is a no, existing non-conforming commercial use. It's been a in-use consisting of eleven rental bedrooms and a owner's apartment in the basement since the nineteen thirties. So it pre-existed the, the passage of zoning in Man, in Manchester. I think that happened in nineteen forty-five. So it's a lawfully existing, pre-existing, non-conforming commercial use and we're seeking it, seeking to change that to a another non-conforming use, which is allowed under the zoning bylaw by special permit. On a showing, I'm sure the board is aware that the change of use will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And so how is it substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood? And in fact, I'm going to suggest strongly, I know there's some opposition here, that it actually will be more beneficial to the neighborhood and here's how. For the zoning boards, from the zoning board's perspective, our project proposes to change this year-round eleven-bedroom in-use to six year-round permanent residential apartment uses. And that will involve a more, that will implicate a more conforming parking arrangement. Currently, there is no provision for the parking requirements of the inn. So there is no applicable code. We have a provision that we're in the parking requirements that requires for one and a half parking spaces per unit and we will have eleven parking spaces, which will present conforming parking for the apartment. So we are going to go to less parking under the zoning bylaw. And practically speaking, of course, if there are eleven units rented, which at times there are certainly during the busy months, we're going to have less parking than is currently on the site. The site also has a three-bedroom cottage that has parking as well. So we are gonna have no more than eleven parking spaces on the site. The parking is not going to change in terms of its dimension or the way it looks than what exists there now. And we propose that this is going to be a less intense parking use and we believe the facts will support that. It's also more conforming because it's going to a full-time residential use in a residential neighborhood, which is not a commercial use. So I submit to the board that this moves this non-conforming use more towards a conforming use, which is always in the interest of the board under the zoning code. So we have a non-conforming lot. We have a non-conforming structure as to setbacks, but we are proposing no changes to the parking areas, no changes to the impervious surfaces, no changes to the exterior of the building except to improve or fix or repair the existing facade, improve or fix the existing windows and things of that nature. But we're not changing the dimensions of the exterior in any way. So the building is not getting larger. It's only going, the only changes that are gonna occur are going to be to the interior, which is going to be completely renovated and then turned into six two-bedrooms apartments. So it'll be exactly the same number of bedroom, I'm sorry, it's not six two-bedrooms apartment, five two-bedrooms apartment and one one-bedroom apartment. So it'll be exactly the same number of bedrooms. So there's not going to be any greater occupancy. Currently and historically, the inn has operated chiefly in the summer months based on the way Dr. Bush has run it as an adjunct to his medical prof, offices and the way it's currently run. So there is currently a drop-off because of the way they choose to run it in the business of the inn during the winter months. But there's nothing that restricts the inn from becoming more busy during the winter months. I know there's been some discussion of that. So if it stays an inn, the most likely development for that inn, if somebody takes it over and invests more money, is that it's going to end up being busy as an eleven-room inn twelve months a year. There's nothing that can prevent that inn from renting out its rooms in a variety of ways to, you know, short-term tenants on a weekly or monthly basis all year long. So those rooms right now, under the current lease, could be filled with the parking lot filled and adding to that during the summer months, there could be functions and even more people. So I submit that a permanent residential use with two-bedroom apartments is going to be a quieter use, is going to be residents who are more part of the neighborhood that people will not be, will, will know because they're going to be full-time residents there and they're not transient. And so I think measured against the prospect of a renovated inn going full-time and lots of transients going through, lots of traffic in and out all day long, apartments where people are living, they don't, the, the traffic impact is not the same. They don't, people, when they live full-time, they don't travel in and out in the same way. So I know that the neighborhood is really concerned about the traffic. I've heard that quite a bit and I understand that people are typically fearful of change. But I do believe that if the neighborhood really thinks about it, they are going to be better served by having a non-commercial use with permanent residents who they know and it's going to be a lot more sedate, less of a traff, traffic impact, less danger on a very busy road, less danger during the most dangerous time of the year, which is during the summer months when really you get most of the activity on Harbor Street because of Tux Point and the Yacht Club. Right now, the, the inn is more likely to be super busy during the summer months and if it gets renovated and even busier, you're going to have functions there. So I think that moving to a full-time residential use with apartments is going to lessen the impact, particularly during the busiest summer months. And I think the neighborhood really needs to consider that. So I think overall, if the neighborhood really thinks about it in a rational way, they are going to be improving their neighborhood. They're gonna get a upgraded and renovated building and they're going to get neighbors that they're going to know and enjoy.
Thank you.
Mister Heraeus, I think, wants to offer some comment as well. I, I did tell me that he wanted to speak directly to the neighborhood. So I did wanna make sure that he got invited to speak as well.
Mister Heraeus.
Hi, uh, excuse me. I know what everybody's thinking and I just wanna assure you, I'm not using a filter. This is, this is what I look like. That was a joke. Yeah, not a great one. Anyway, hi, everybody. For those of you that I've already spoken to, for those of you that I've already reached out to, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your opinions. Thank you very much for the courteous way that I did receive it. I, I get that there's some objection to what I'm trying to do. I do really appreciate the way that it wasn't made personal. I can be a little bit sensitive sometimes, but I, I hear you loud and clear. You have, you have concerns. When I went into this particular project to try to purchase the inn and renovate it, I had it with the idea of, I knew, I knew where it was. I know it's at the mouth of Tux Point. I understand it's a very nice neighborhood and I was, I understand the neighborhood. And I was trying to be very courteous and cognizant of the fact that I did not want to, I didn't want to impede on somebody else's lifestyle or what they've been used to. So when I went into it, I was thinking, what could I do here that'd be great, great for me? Because it's not completely altruistic and at the same time satisfy my surrounding neighbors. I plan on living onsite, so if I'm there, I'm also able to oversee who comes in, who comes out of there, who, who, I will be able to vet the people who are going to be writing from me. And that's important to me because if I'm gonna be there with my family, I also wanna live in a quiet setting and I wanna enjoy myself. I, I tried to reach out to everybody, answer as many questions I could, get as many opinions as I possibly could before I presented my plan to the board. I feel that the plan doesn't really change the use very much, other than the fact that it'll be used. Eleven bedrooms to eleven bedrooms, organized units as opposed to twelve dissected bedrooms and bathrooms, more continuity. I don't know quite else what to say. I, I'm not changing the exterior at all. I'm trying to organize the parking. And again, I, I will be there onsite as a resident, as a neighbor. And the last thing I really want is angry neighbors. So I appreciate being able to come here and explain what I'm trying to do. I, I wish it was in person sometimes. I think it's a easier delivery when you can do it in person, but we don't have that luxury right now. So again, I, I, I ask that you, please take into consideration what I'm trying to do, what the existing conditions are, how I believe strongly that I'm mitigating any potential problems rather than exasperating them. And I said a bit of my plan in good faith, tried to be transparent and I hope it came across that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Mitchell, do you have any questions of either Mister Harris or Mister Brown?
I vote at this time. Like everyone else, I'd like to hear from the, from the neighbors.
Jim Dietrich. You're on mute.
This is for Mister Caris. Harris, how long have you owned the inn?
Excuse me?
How long have you owned the inn?
Mister Dietrich, I don't, I don't own the inn. The inn is currently, I, I have, I have an offer to purchase the inn pending permitting.
Very well. Thank you.
Catherine?
Thank you.
Brian? Brian? You're on mute.
There we go. At the site visit, was my understanding that on the backside with a single-family home is, you were going to create some more pervious material? Right now, I'm looking at the application and there doesn't seem to be a change in existing conditions. Do you, was I misinformed? Did I misunderstand or did you, were you talking about trying to create a little bit more pervious parking in the back?
Yeah, so there's a asphalt driveway going to the back, going from Harbor Street. I was gonna take it out and put more of a stone driveway.
Okay, cuz it doesn't say it here. All right, that's the only question I have at this point. I reserve.
Um, I have a question for Russ Brown. I don't see that there's any place in the Manchester zoning bylaws in the residential district or general district that allow six-unit apartment buildings. So it might be residential, but it seems to me like why isn't it outside the four corners of a bylaw?
There are, that's correct. There, there are no provisions for six-unit buildings in Manchester. This would be a, just like there is no provision for the inn. So it would be a change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, which is allowed by law on a finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So the Board of Appeals is allowed to do that. Go from one not allowed use to another not allowed use. That's the finding they have to make. And what I was saying is that, when you looked at, so, yeah, so technically, just like there are no parking provisions for an inn, they don't even address it. I was, we used to have hotels in Manchester, but I assume by the time we got around to doing a parking requirement, that the hotels were gone. So there are none and there are no provisions that take us up to a, you know, parking requirement for a, you know, eleven-bedroom unit or six, two-bedroom, six-unit building. But I extrapolate that for if you look at the zoning bylaw parking requirements, all of the progressive increases in parking requirements, they go up in one and a half increments per unit. So that's what I'm suggesting. That's, 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 so the, the requirement as established by the code seems to be, according to the way that the math works, it's one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. So that's why I'm suggesting you, it's, at least there is a provision for apartment units in the zoning code. So I'm, I'm suggesting to you that we are becoming more conforming in that we're moving in the right direction from a completely non-conforming parking arrangement to a more conforming parking arrangement. So that's the operative word, that we're, we're becoming more conforming.
If there's no more questions from the board, I will.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, that was a question, I apologize.
No, you're, I haven't opened the public hearing yet.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you. It's coming. So what I will now do is, is enter into the record various pieces of correspondence we've received with just a general feeling as to what they addressed. There is a letter from Alfred Rossi and Angelica Rossi of eighty-nine Bridge. They said they had no objection to the special permit. There is a letter from Seth Bartlett, addressed not given. He lives on Sunset Hill and is familiar with the property and feels it has gone downhill over time and thinks that apartments would be better than any. And then there is one from Thomas Dalio of forty-seven Forster Road. He is familiar with the property, calls it an iconic structure and believes that rehabbing it would be beneficial. and believes that rehabbing it would be beneficial. All the rest of the correspondence we've received is not in favor of the application. I have a letter for Ronald and Mary Skates of Four Boardman Ave. They had concerns of transitioning to permanent residence and parking issues, traffic issues, and safety issues. Because the concern is with six units, cars would be parking on Harbor Street in front of the units. I have a letter from Chris Maroney of Jersey Lane. He feels the present inn is seasonal and closed in the winter with low utilization. And there are rarely very many cars in the parking lot, and the concern is if it goes into six apartments plus the carriage house, that there will be additional parking requirements and concerns with respect to the dangerousness of the intersection because it's blind coming around them from Jersey Lane. The next one is from Bruce and Cindy Journey of Eight Tux Point. They are concerned about traffic, have asked whether any type of traffic survey was done and concerned that if the units are rental, that there would be a demand for families wanting to use the Manchester schools. There is a letter from oh boy, I'm not going to pronounce this right. Marian Yukel? Sorry. And she is stating that she doesn't feel that it's, the conversion is consistent with current zoning. And she's concerned about the explanation attached to the application for the reasons why it's not more detrimental and thinks that there's flaws in those comments. I have a letter from from Leslie Gurley to Tux Point Road. She's raised concerns with respect to parking for the six units and thinks they would each have two cars, which would exceed, plus the carriage house would exceed the number of spots being provided and that there's really no alternate with respect to where people can park. Can raise concerns about it being used as an Airbnb or VRBO and concerned about the high volume of traffic going into Tux Point that makes this intersection particularly hazardous and will increase the amount of traffic with walking and driving on Tux Point. Have a letter from Michael and Martha Chapman of One Thirty-One Bridge. They raised concerns regarding traffic safety and the dangerousness of the intersection and the fact there have been accidents that people can't see coming around the corner. Concerns about parking that the 1.5 spots per unit isn't enough because there's no room for visitors and concerned about the occupancy density that the inn is, has historically been used mostly on weekends and usually nine months out of the year. And so this will be more people year-round, there all day. Those people staying at the inn go off and do things during the day. A letter from Peter and Tori Morton of One Twenty-Eight Bridge Street, which has raised concerns about traffic at that intersection, pedestrians crossing the street, issues regarding parking. And again, they say that very rarely are there six cars there. Have there been six cars there in the past? And this is bringing in a lot more permanent cars. And they have concerns about the Carriage House Barn becoming a permanent resident, residents. And they thought that the current owner of the inn was going to commission to use as a rental unit to offset some financial hardship. I don't have any information on that. There is a letter from Pamela Kenworthy, MD of One Harbor Street. She is raising concerns about the dangerousness of the intersection, frequency of pedestrians and joggers, concerned that with two-bedroom units, there will be children living in them and that there's no common space on which the children could play or get outside without being in hazard of traffic. And also concerned about the traffic to Tux Point going through that intersection. I have a letter from Donna Nagler and Peter Nagler, who raised concerns about the traffic hazard, parking, that it's not a safe intersection, that there's too many cars coming through there anyway, and that it would ask to switch from a non-conforming hotel inn to a non-conforming residential use. Okay, I have I have a letter from Sue and Bob Thomas, and I also have a letter from Adam J. Costa, an attorney representing the Thompson. There are, the Thompsons raised issues of intensifying traffic and safety issues, intensifying parking, additional neighborhood impact regarding waste removal, outdoor common community access, overhead cables, limited sewage capacity. And Mr. Costa has raised case law regarding other cases in which changing from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use in these instances was not upheld by the courts. Okay. So that's what we've received in correspondence. Now.
Dara, I just want to let you know that I'm here. It's John Benares. Two minutes ago, I'm sorry, I'm late.
So now I will open the public hearing. As I said before, each person may speak only once and for no more than five minutes. So I'm going to try to use this system if I can. Got way too many people to see on my screen. So if people who would like to speak on this application would like to raise their hands, I will call on them. And then after you've spoken, please take your hand down so I can figure out which are new hands. Okay? The first hand I see is Richard Blau. Would you like to unmute yourself and speak?
I would be honored. I'm Richard Blau, Twenty-Five Harbor Street. A lot of people have commented on the parking and traffic, to which I also object. So I'll try to keep that a little brief. But for five two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom, eleven spaces are inadequate. Period. I also question whether, and I go by there all the time, trying to put eleven cars into that lot would also create such a tight situation that people would have to back out onto Harbor Street or One Twenty-Seven and might be even more dangerous. Now, for the zoning board, that, those of you that don't live right here, Harbor Street is a two-lane street that has no parking. One Twenty-Seven has, as best I remember, no on-street parking. Harbor Street is no parking zone, and although we have tons of people whose landscapers park there or who park there illegally, when a car is parked on Harbor Street, it reduces it to a one-lane road with people going both ways to Tux Point and the Yacht Club, and it's dangerous. And adding this kind of traffic through the Old Corner Inn would be a bad idea. Now, keeping in mind how many people are here and how bad I am at Zoom meetings. I also hear the less detrimental argument coming from counsel for the applicant. The Old Corner Inn, I suspect, I know it was never that crowded because I've been going by it for twenty-something years and there are rarely more than two or three cars in the parking lot. Turning it into an alternate eleven-unit inn would be great if they could fill it, but I suspect it's been so unprofitable that keeping it an inn isn't a great idea. So the detrimental theory of, oh, well, if we don't do this, we'll just have eleven people living there all the time is not happening. I think that, you know, the idea, the idea of having an eleven-room profitable in there that also has a function area, I don't see where the space is. So basically, six units, I think, is way too much with this parking. Personally, I think this is single zoning, but I think, I don't know, maybe they want six and they'd take two. But anything else is going to be detrimental. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person I see is Lisa Wilson.
Hi, thank you. For those, I don't know everyone on here, but I have lived on Bridge Street for thirty years this year and have witnessed several accidents. It is a bad corner. I don't want to be disrespectful to those who are overly concerned or who are actually rightly concerned about the issue of traffic flow. But I think that perhaps if we think about the big picture, this could be an opportunity to mitigate a currently dangerous situation. And if Mr. Haraes is willing to work with people to accommodate our concerns, which aren't just for the neighborhood, but for the street in general, I think that we should, should give that some thought. I personally think it could be a great idea, or it is a great idea, to take the structure and do something positive with it. Currently, it's in great disrepair. That parking area, the way it stands now poses a tremendous danger because people can sort of drive across it. I have been walking by that for thirty years with my dog, with my kids. People don't stop at the crosswalks regardless currently. So if there could maybe be a retaining wall or some kind of structure that, and a designated egress to and from the building and the parking spaces, I believe that that could really benefit the situation. Now, I think we need to consider what is existing currently, which is zoned for, obviously, a non-conforming zoning, but an indoor boarding house, potentially, there could be a whole lot more traffic. And perhaps someone who purchases it who is not willing to do something with the current parking situation. And it could actually be even greater, be a greater problem than it is now. So I did speak with Nick. He was kind enough to reach out to all the neighbors and I listened thoughtfully and I genuinely believe he would like to restore that building to, to its original sort of grandeur, I guess for lack of a better term, and really do some high-quality improvements to it and renovate and reside in the cottage in the back. I personally share a sewer line with the Old Corner Inn. Private sewer tie-in, long lengthy story, quite a battle. And I went to the engineer, Ben Rossi, and he assured me that, I, I am addressing this because I heard it come up in one of the letters. There won't be a negative impact on the sewer in any way by converting it from what is existing to a six, a six-room, a six-unit building. So I just wanted to get that out of the way. And as far as, again, the danger, what I hear most people or the greatest concerns I hear about the traffic flow, the safety, et cetera, and I think that if parking is, is thoughtfully created, and if there's some way to assure approval, whatever that might be from the ZBA, I don't really know the details of how that process works, but if there were, you know, an approval specifically for the parking that people could look at and maybe feel a little more comfortable with, I think that would be great. I also wanted to speak to the fact that a lot of people are concerned about guests and where they're going to park. And I'll tell you right now, how many times do you see cars parked up and down Bridge Street when someone has a party? The Mortons have a host of people parking. It's just the nature of town, school street. Classic example, there are many rental units in this community that don't even have parking spaces. So I don't know whether or not 1.5 spaces per unit is going to prove to be adequate, but I believe if it's advertised as such, and then that's up to the owner who's renting the apartment to, to assure that the parking requirements are met. I guess what I'd like to, my hope is that people will view this in a fair way and understand that instead of seeing all the negatives that could potentially come out, maybe we could work together and, and see the positives, which I personally would love to see. More clearly delineated parking and just a better scope of use for that structure, which right now is pretty dilapidated. And if someone were to come along and purchase it for the right price, it could easily be turned into a boarding house, Airbnb, people coming and going, and I, obviously, we can't guarantee that Mr. Hurias will be a permanent resident in the cottage, but I think that, given that his intention is to live there and assure that the property is managed, either way, whether he lives there or not, he will be responsible for the safety and the upkeep of the building regardless. So as a neighbor, I am actually for the project and I, I apologize to not write a letter in advance. But I hope that people take some time to consider the potential benefits and the collaboration that could ultimately be quite positive for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Gurley, it looks like you're next up.
John Leslie Gurley, Two Tux Point. And, you know, we have similar concerns that have already been expressed by others. I do think it is a dangerous intersection. There's no question about that. There's been, you know, some sad accidents there. I, I think the, the idea that we'd have a decreased use or degrees used of parking is is false reasoning because we never see more than two, three, four cars there. And that's very few months out of the year. It's very rare to see six or eight cars. I think if you have a year-round residence, you're going to see a lot more cars parked there. And it's a tight parking spot already. And it's true that people coming in and out of that area don't respect the yield signs and it can be a dangerous intersection as it is. I think it's a very high-density use of that space for a neighborhood that's very low-density. I do think as Mr. Blau had pointed out, if you had two units, maybe even a maximum of three, where it's a three-story inn, but to put two units per floor seems a really dense, packed space use on a very small lot, which is, you know, the lot is not sufficient for that. So. So, and also, I don't know if there's any way to address the idea of these being used for transient rentals such as VRBO or Airbnb. So those are some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands. Oh, Adam Costa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Adam Costa. I'm an attorney with the firm of Mead, Kallerman &amp; Costa. As you said, Madam Chair, I submitted a letter in advance of tonight's hearing and hope that all of you have had an opportunity to maybe at least peruse it and maybe have a further opportunity to review it before you're prepared to vote. I've, I'm representing Sue and Bob Thompson. They're, they're here tonight as well. And they, they own the property at Zero Harbor Street, which is immediately opposite the inn that's in question. So as you might imagine, they're, they're significantly affected by, or will be significantly affected by any potential change in use of, of the inn and the, the subject property. In the letter that I submitted, I, I made a couple of arguments. And again, Madam Chair, you alluded to them when you, when you introduced the letter into the record. And, and I appreciate, at least with respect to the first of these items, that it's a, it's sort of a technical legal argument, not, not the most confusing argument, but a legal argument nonetheless. But I think it's an important one for the board to consider. And it's already been alluded to once that multifamily dwellings aren't allowed use in the single-residence District E. In fact, a six- or seven-unit dwelling is not allowed to use anywhere in, in the town of Manchester. Not by right, not by special permit. So the applicant in seeking to sort of, I won't say evade, but avoid that, that prohibition is into this section 6.1.2. And that section says that a non-conforming structure may be changed, extended, or altered. In each case, this board grants a special permit after finding that the change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That provision is not unique to Manchester. It exists in many zoning ordinances and bylaws throughout Massachusetts. I've represented over the past fourteen or fifteen years dozens of boards like yours. In fact, that's my primary practice, is representing municipalities and municipal boards. So I'm often found reviewing language of this sort in zoning ordinances and bylaws and providing guidance to zoning boards and to planning boards. And I think it's important to note that this is typically used in circumstances where routine structural modifications are being made to a, a non-conforming structure or minor, modest, unexceptional changes are being made to a use. The example I gave in my letter was converting, say, a restaurant to a catering company, something similar. What's proposed here is converting an inn, which is, and we don't address this, a pre-existing, non-conforming legal use. It's lawful because it's non-conforming. The depth of non-conforming is that it was legal when it started, but it's not legal anymore. Well, how can you change that non-conforming use, given the definition that I just stated, to another non-conforming use? It wouldn't be another non-conforming use. It would be another use that's unlawful, another use that's prohibited. But it's contrary to the whole concept of the, the protection that a non-conformity is allowed and the limited modifications that are permitted. And speaking, the courts have, have supported this position. I cited to a couple of cases in my letter, and one of the most telling cases, because the language of the bylaw in this other community happened to be the town of Northbridge, was virtually identical verbatim what's in the Manchester zoning bylaw. And in that case, the land court looked at an attempt to convert a truck terminal to an auto body shop, arguably a less, a, a less detrimental use, a less intense use. But the court said, that's not possible. The judge said, although the bylaw appears to allow such a change in use, and I'm going to quote the judge here, "Such an interpretation is inappropriate as the bylaw should be interpreted, if possible, to be consistent with Chapter 40A, which is the zoning act." And the judge said, "If the law were such that any property owner had the right to change a non-conforming use to any other use, including a prohibited use, so long as the new use wasn't substantially more detrimental, then these non-conformities would tend to exist in perpetuity, and that'd be contrary to the whole zoning scheme." So I think it's important as a preliminary matter, even before this board gets to the question of substantial detriment, whether this is even something you can do, whether this new use that's being requested is even a use that you can allow at the site. Well, that's my first point. And then I'll be very quick with my second point because I know we've got time constraints, and I think that some of these points have already been made and probably will continue to be made by other, other residents of the neighborhood. But when we look to the question of substantial detriment, this is an existing inn that's on, they're not seeking one special permit for non-conformities. They're actually seeking two different special permits. They're modifying the structure. That's a modification of a non-conforming structure. They're also modifying the use, which is a modification of a non-conforming use. You've got an inn on a fourteen-thousand-square-foot parcel where ninety-thousand square feet are required in the district. That's six times as much land area. You've got a front yard setback of approximately eleven or twelve feet where thirty feet are required, a one-and-a-half-foot side yard setback where twenty feet are required, a rear yard setback of 4.2 feet where forty feet are required, and you've got all sorts of other dimensional standards that aren't complied with. So this is, this is a very intense use of the site already so far as non-conforming uses and structures are considered. When you then look at what they're attempting to place on the property, it's far more intense. They're converting a seasonal use to a year-round use. They're changing the structure itself, which includes a sort of an iconic wraparound porch, to a self-contained structure. That porch will be enclosed and will become part of the building itself, allowing them to place three units on that first floor. They're increasing the parking demand. They're increasing the traffic. They've got no, no storage locations shown on the plan. They're increasing the number of bathrooms and kitchens, which is going to place increased demand on the sewer capacity, notwithstanding what some residents might think. It's, it's simple math when you look at the number of kitchens that exist there now versus the number of kitchens that'll be proposed, not to mention the overall number of full bathrooms. So this is certainly a significant expansion of a non-conforming structure. It's a significant expansion of a non-conforming use. And this is not the first attempt to do that with this particular inn. There was an application made back in the nineteen-eighties, nineteen eighty-four. In fact, to do something far simpler, I would say, which was to add food and beverage service to the existing inn at that time. And this board, not these members, but this same board, had an opportunity to look at that application and denied the application. Said, you know, the, the addition of the food and beverage service even to occasional non-patrons of the inn was going to require an, an expansion that was beyond the four corners of what was permitted there, which was simply a seasonal inn.
I think you're running out of time, Mr. Costa.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Mike Chapman.
Thank you. This is Mike and Martha Chapman. We're at 131 Bridge Street. We're across 127 from the Old Corner Inn. My folks bought the house here in the mid-sixties, and we bought the house for my dad and moved in about fifteen years ago. So we, we've been in the, in the neighborhood, more or less, since then. I want to say first, I want to, want to thank Mr. Heraeus for reaching out to the neighbors because I think that that was, that was very nice of him to, to get input from the neighbors ahead of time. And I also, in, in his plan, his plan states that he's, he's going to keep the, the building, the exterior of the building as is, also, you know, something that we would like to see as neighbors. But we still have concerns, and I think that they've been, they've been voiced before about the occupancy density from a part-time inn to a full-time residence. You know, normally, when we look across the, the way, we'll see a parking lot that is relatively full, maybe, you know, one, you know, on the weekends, but not during the week. So we do have a concern that the, that the extra traffic of the full-time residence is, is going to be a problem. We agree that this can be a very dangerous corner to live on, both for drivers and also pedestrians. We, we see and hear problems of the, of people trying to get across the crosswalks. And the last two motor vehicle accidents here in the area happened on our property. And it's, it's not to, not to say that, well, it, it is to say that we're very concerned about the extra traffic going in and out, out of the parking lot of the inn will, will exacerbate that. And as people have said, parking, we believe parking is also an issue, especially for visitors. It is true that people park on Bridge Street temporarily. We all do it. However, if we're adding six full-time units, we now, we're now at the point where we may increase the amount of parking on Bridge Street for visitors and the like. And it's tough for us to get out of our driveway. Oftentimes, we can't see what's coming down 127 from Bridge Street until we're, we're almost right out into the, into the street. So I want to thank everyone for the time, and those are our comments.
Thank you. Flo Johnson. You need to unmute yourself there.
Hi there. Hi, Nick. So I, we did not write a letter. Flo and Noel is not here. Forty Harbor Street, just down the street. I think we're all here because we love, love our town. We love this neighborhood. We love the architecture. We want to preserve it. We're really fortunate to live here. I'm just here because I'm just going to echo a lot of what other people have said. I think, Nick, I'm sure you have really good intentions. I, I know you had let me know this was a thought. I thought, oh, huh, all right, good idea. I hadn't thought there were going to be six units in the building, which sounds like a lot in that space. I'm just speaking out right now just on behalf of safety. I have three kids. We've lived here over eighteen years, nineteen years. I've seen a lot, a lot of change here. It's, it's a challenge when the landscapers come every day across the street. So, you know, we, we have a lot of traffic. It's increasing. And I still worry about my kids crossing that street. I used to worry about my kids getting on the bus at the end of the street. So, you know, I'm, I, I haven't looked at the details of the parking and the planning. I did notice that that beautiful wraparound porch was going to be, you know, that outdoor space was going to be lost, and that's, that is common, common space. So, you know, I, I love what Lisa Wilson said, that it would be great to be able to work together. I guess ideally, I would love to see it either be restored as a single home or just less, less number of families in there. You know, I think we'd all love to say, oh, it'd be great that it remained an inn and it was seasonal and no one was going to be there in the winter, but I don't know if we, we don't have that much control. We just really want to keep, I think we want to keep our neighborhood safe. We want to protect people. That road is awfully busy, and I feel for the Mortons and the other family across the way. Two families, we've had really significant accidents and a death right there. So we have, we have all felt that and lived it. So, you know, we want to continue to all share the neighborhood in some way. We all love this place. So, but in the name of safety, I, I, I have significant concerns. And, and I'm also just a preservationist at heart, so. So thank you. I'm sure Noel would have said it differently, but he's at the hockey rink. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Mikel Falzone.
Hi, this is Joe and Robin Falzoni, Seventy-three Harbor Street. I've lived here for thirty-four years, the fourth-longest-living resident on Tuck's Point, Harbor Street, in Boardman Ave. I'm a residential real estate developer. I have been for forty-six years. And there's something that the applicant didn't mention at the beginning, that I see that the market is going to predict what happens there. This property went on the market for $2 million. It's an inn. No one could ever afford to pay that. So the new purchases come along, and it's now $1.2 million. And they haven't talked about what the market's going to do to that place because the best thing that can happen to the neighborhood is, as the price comes down, because it's going to become a one-family house with the carriage house in the back. To date, that hasn't been able to happen because of the price of the building. The traffic, because there's no direct curb cut onto that property, and because it's at an intersection that's not a T, that the state is changing all over the state of Massachusetts to Ts, just like they did up the road. It needs to have a direct designated curb cut so that they're not backing out the way that they are. And 1.5 parking spaces is never going to work. Doesn't work in any of my residential developments. It's not going to work there. And because that's a non-T intersection, your parking can only be out in front of the inn. There's a mailbox there, and you can't even get by there. I'm the one that petitioned the selectmen for that yield sign that's out in front of the inn and for the stop sign that's at the junction of Tuck's Point and Harbor Street. Those didn't even exist. It's helped, but people that don't know this neighborhood on a regular basis still plow through there. So my position, and my position talking with some director buddies to join in on an appeal, is asking for six units is ridiculous. There is no possible way that place is going to be able to handle parking and guest parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Journey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a quick question. We've speculated from the beginning of Russ's opening comments to many of the comments that we've all had on the volume of traffic, the capacity for parking and so forth. A question I have, and Madam Chair, I'm not sure it's appropriate here, but may I ask a question for an answer during this session, or is it just for my comment?
No, you can ask. It's a question, but it probably will be answered at the end.
Okay. Has a parking impact, traffic impact plan been done? Is there any kind of mitigation and survey work that has been done in both the summer and winter months because the traffic patterns are wildly different, as we all know? And I'm wondering, rather than all of us sit here and speculate on what the traffic volume is, have Mr. Heraeus, have you done a plan in advance of your development?
I will let the applicant answer that question, yes or no.
Okay. And then the second, second comment I have is relative to, you know, the density of occupancy, which several people have commented on as well. And it strikes me that the cost of educating a child in Manchester schools is, according to the current budget, $17,448 per student. And if six of those apartments were rented to, you know, a couple with a single child or not, the incremental cost burden to the school system could be substantial. And a question I have on that regard fiscally is, what are the projected real estate taxes that will be paid to the town for the building in, after its future is completed? Because it strikes me that if you had more than two kids that attend the Manchester schools from this property, it's probably a net loser for the town in terms of tax revenue.
That, that's not something we can take into consideration of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Application.
Okay.
We can't get into tax consequences, unfortunately.
No problem. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chairman, did you want me to address the traffic study?
Yes, please.
So the answer is that no, that we haven't undertaken a traffic study. I believe we are willing to do, do so. We, we discussed the possibility that might come up. And I'm certainly, I know the applicant and myself, we're, we're certainly in favor of proceeding on the facts rather than speculation. I'm sure everybody would rather know, rather than speculate what the traffic impact is. um, rather than speculate what the traffic impact is. So, certainly not out of the question, but of course, the ultimate decision is Mr. Heraeus's.
Correct. Um, Fiona Cushing, you sent me a chat regarding a letter you had submitted that we don't seem to have received, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I, uh, good evening, everyone, I'm Phelia Cushing, I live at 16 Harbor Street, and I directly have bought the Old Corner Inn. In fact, my land runs right to the driveway of the Little Red Carriage House. Um, but I wanted to say, Madam Chairman, that I hand-delivered three letters of my neighbors. I delivered Pam Kenworthy, I delivered, uh, Sharon Devanese in my own letter, so I'm, I'm surprised that Pam's was received, because, um, and the other two weren't, because I hand-delivered them to Sonia. Um, anyway, first of all, um, I hope that the board has had the opportunity to read some of the letters, because among ourselves, and I've been really impressed with our community, um, and the time that people have taken to write these letters, which have been quite detailed. And has the board, Madam Chairman, been able to see all the correspondence that's been written?
Oh, yes.
There have just been some beautiful letters and, and really well-stated. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm on record to make sure that my opinion is clear, which is, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I, I'm not adverse to change, um, I would, we, I think many of us would love to see this, uh, beautiful house restored and, and brought to, you know, an improved, um, value and, and condition. But, um, the, the, um, plan is just completely, it, it's unrealistic, it's too dense. All, all the points have been beautifully stated, I don't need to restate them. I think one of my strongest concerns is also my property value, um, with having the Little Red Carriage House, and all of a sudden, four or five parking spaces. I believe four are already in existence, but they've never been used. It's a narrow driveway. Um, there's going to be a noise factor, uh, there is going to be, it's, um, overpopulated, it's, I think it's already been stated, but I just want to make sure for the record, um, as a director butter, that it's very clear that unfortunately, I am very strongly opposed to this project.
Thank you. Um, Sue and Bob Thompson. You need to unmute.
Hi, Bob Thompson, this is Bob and Sue Thompson, 0 Harbor Street. We live directly across Harbor Street from the Old Corner Inn. First of all, I would like to say we are opposed to this as well, we've, uh, we've been there for thirty-three years, we've, uh, we've had too much time to observe everything that goes on at the inn. Um, I'd like to share, uh, one of, one of our experiences, uh, when the inn experimented with long-term residents. Uh, primarily, the inn is, is seasonal, as we all know, it has, uh, it's very, um, it's weekend-oriented, uh, resident or weekend-oriented guests. Uh, and it's rarely ever failed during the weekend, or during the week. Well, the year that they did try to get long-term residents in there was 2005, they're looking for additional revenue. And, um, here's what happened, there wasn't enough parking. Cars were parked in the street, on the sidewalk, uh, cars blocked neighbors' driveways, one car even parked in my driveway. Police were notified, because we didn't know who, whose car it was, uh, and they located the owner, and the owner was a resident at the inn, who said he had no other place to park. Snow piles, snow, winter weather, uh, exacerbates that issue, makes it much, the parking much worse, because it eliminates many of the spots. Particularly, it eliminates all the spots at the bottom of that very steep driveway, um, because they can't navigate it. Uh, to that point, the store also made trash removal almost impossible, because a truck would be, would get stuck on that driveway. Um, that, along with the fact that there's absolutely no outdoor common areas, uh, except for the driveway, the parking lot. Um, so the renters and their guests would congregate in the, on the parking lot, on the porch and on the sidewalk to smoke, to have their morning coffee, to have the evening cocktails, and they even set up a barbecue on the parking lot that, that winter, um, because they, you know, that's what, they had no other place to go. I think 2005 shows us what happens when this non-conforming property with a very small lot, um, has multiple year-round residents. We do not support this project, and we do not want to repeat the year of 2005. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
More.
Tori Morton.
Ron Skates.
Okay, hold on, Ron, I'll go to Tori Morton first and then you.
Alright, thank you.
We'll yield to Ron.
Cause Ron's had his hand up, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I wrote a letter in opposition to the, uh, proposed change, I live on Boardman Avenue, my wife and I live before Boardman Avenue, and we traverse the street on a daily basis. I've mentioned this to the proposed developer, because he seemed like a decent fellow, but I think the problem is, you're trying to put a ten-pound box in a six, uh, sized bag, it just doesn't fit. I'd also have one factual question, and I didn't think about this until I saw you tonight, or two factual questions, what, is he putting in a sprinkler system? Fire predictions, you'll have a fire sprinkler system?
It's by, uh, by co-adminitory, if I get that.
Second of all, his attorney pointed out that there's no provision for six-family apartments in the town of Manchester. Isn't the better course for the planning board and the town meeting to decide whether we want six-point apartments, than start putting them in arbitrarily? Uh, isn't that a better way to decide how our town wants to go forward? Than to just put one here, then have some other person use as an excuse for putting another one? Shouldn't there be a plan for the town, particularly given the safety concerns? Uh, I also am concerned that I think the economics are such that pretty soon this could very easily turn into a, our Airbnb. Uh, and, uh, because I think that the, uh, amount of money that's going to have to go into this project, if he has a very hard time renting it, which I think he will, because of the, uh, confined nature of the property, uh, I think it's going to be Airbnb before we know it. So, my main point is safety, that's my main concern, but in hearing the hearing, I think the town will decide whether we want six-unit apartments, which we may, but not to have this board put one in arbitrarily. With all due respect, thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Tori Morton.
Hi, this is, uh, Peter Morton, on behalf of Tori Morton, we live at 128 Bridge Street, um, a director butter of the inn, and we've been here for twenty-seven years, and as you can sense from, um, all the previous comments, most of us have been in this neighborhood for twenty-plus years. Um, we just want to start by, um, saying thank you to Nick as well, he's been very upfront and communicative in this process. And I'm afraid that, um, we do oppose this as it's currently presented for all the, most of the reasons you've just heard, and primarily that we feel like it's just far too dense for that footprint. I thought that the Thompson's attorney really, um, summed it up very well about the, the size of the lot itself. I mean, it's fourteen thousand square feet, and now, not only are we going to have one, uh, permanent residence for the inn, or that, that six-unit building, but now there's going to be a second, what's turning into a permanent residence in the Red Carriage Inn, which the attorney did point out is non-conforming, and is literally a foot and a half on one end, and four feet on the other end from our property. So, um, and to those that are worried about, uh, the, the property turning into an Airbnb or VRBO, it already is. The, the carriage house is currently being used that way, and Tori and I unfortunately witnessed quite a few people coming in and out of there, and I think a couple of things that haven't been brought up, maybe have been mentioned, but we're very concerned about are things such as trash and trash removal. Um, there's a dumpster that sits basically on our property, which now currently is in front of where two parking spaces are to go, and I just, we're concerned about whether, A, that will fit, and B, with that many people living in a building, is a dumpster of that size going to accommodate the amount of trash that's going to be generated? Tori and I unfortunately, um, as many people have mentioned, have witnessed some fatal accidents. And I do mean some, there've been two in particular, um, and many, many other serious ones, and I know that this isn't the forum for this discussion, but that intersection is really poorly designed for modern-day standards, and um, I think one other thing that I, I wanted, um, to emphasize as well, that the Thompson's attorney did, is the frontage on the property. I believe that, um, ten feet is all that there is, and the way that the parking on the, the gravel lot is currently planned is for, um, it to run away from the inn, six spots there, and then, if, from what I've been told, is that, um, and Nick, I'm sorry, but you, we did talk about this, that if your plan for guests, and if there are guests, is to have them piggyback the, uh, the parking spaces of the, uh, rooms that they're visiting, and I was out there, uh, just yesterday, and I can't conceive of how that possibly could, could fit, so, um, and my, my question, another question we have is, the one and a half parking spaces per unit, and I, this is a question for the zoning board, and I apologize that we don't know the answer to this, is that the requirement for rental properties in Manchester?
The parking requirements in the zoning bylaws are specific with respect to number of units, and it only goes up to four. So, there's nothing specific in the bylaw with respect to the number of parking units required for a six-unit.
Thank you, then I would like to emphasize what, what Mr. Skates just mentioned about the, uh, the possibility of discussing the approval of the six-unit, um, dwelling being, um, something that the town even wants to consider. I think we're ahead of the game in, in this regard, um, and then, um, oh, we're just curious, um, over the years, that Red Carriage House, and I know it's, it's literally in our backyard, so that's why we're so focused on it. What, our understanding is that the current owner of the inn at one point petitioned the town to allow for renters to occupy that carriage house, and it has been renovated a little over the past couple of years, but looking at that roofline and everything else around it, it virtually looks like it's about to fall down, and we just wonder, does, is the zoning board aware of what actually is allowed in that carriage house at this point, what's legally allowed?
We do not have that information.
Okay, and also the fact that it literally is built in the wetlands. Um, because we border the wetlands as well, we've had to be very, um, aware, and we follow the rules of wetland setbacks whenever we've done any construction on our house, and the fact that there's going to be significant construction going on here, and Nick, I applaud you for your, your plans on doing that, as close to those wetlands as, um, will occur, we're, we're very concerned about the, the, um, that happening as well, so that's...
Okay, Pete.
Yeah.
The construction's going to be happening on the inside, there's not going to be anything happening on the outside, not, the only thing that's going to be happening on the outside is going to be any type of wood rot, et cetera, but it shouldn't be, there's not going to be, I believe, there's not going to be any impact of the wetlands, and if there is, there's all types of laws, EPA laws that have to follow with straw netting, et cetera, then of course, I would follow. But in regards to the house, the red house on the wetlands, I think it's been there for a while, hasn't it?
The red, the carriage house, oh yeah, it, it sure has, but when we first moved in, nobody ever lived in there.
It's never been a residence.
Yeah, suddenly, it, it was allowed to have people live there, and now it's, it's going, it's evolving to the next step, which, Nick, you proposed with your family, it's going to be there full-time.
Well, that's, well, that's my, that's my plan, my plan is to actually live, I, I currently live at, at 41 Lincoln Street, it's a multifamily house, I manage this, I have other multifamily homes in town that I also manage here. I plan on moving to the, we'll call it the schoolhouse, you can call it the carriage house, whatever you'd like. I plan on being onsite, man, I, I hear all your concerns, everybody, I, I do. Thanks, Pete, thank you, Tori.
Now, thanks, Nick, appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I don't see anybody else who wishes to be recognized.
Can I, can I add something?
What would you like to add?
I just wanted to add that in the time that probably all of us have lived here, wetlands, just so Nick is aware, those wetlands have become wetter and wetter every year. And so, I just, I just want to raise that awareness, because the safety of that building, that little red building, is probably at stake as well, um, the foundation of it, just so you know, um, you know, we've had significant...
Right, and, and I'm sorry, wetlands are out of scope for this meeting.
Yeah.
Conservation commission issue.
Right, I, I'm just saying, in general, you know, if you're, if you're planning to buy a building, I just want you to be aware, I, you know, it's, it's something I did not anticipate living here, that, um...
It doesn't have a basement.
Okay, let's, thank you. Um, I will now...
This is Deb Barker, 138 Bridge Street.
Yes, sir.
Could I, uh, Madam Chairman, just say a word, I, I want to register as opposed uh, to this project for a lot of the reasons you've already heard. And I just feel, uh, in addition, that this is a single-family residential district, and a six-unit apartment building does not belong in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I'll now ask members of the board if they have what their thoughts are, um, they have questioned, James Mitchell.
I, I'd just like to, uh, address what I've heard in the last hour. I, I do support the notion of additional rental units in Manchester. I also support the sensitive restoration of a landmark building. Uh, in addition, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to reach out to the neighbors and include them in the planning and listening to their concerns. However, after hearing everything tonight, I do suspect there are perhaps insurmountable challenges with respect to traffic, safety, parking, and density. Um, so I would ask a couple of questions for consideration. Could the project be scaled down? I, I think that would be an appropriate response. And I also support the, uh, the idea of having a traffic study done to confirm, uh, some of these concerns about traffic.
Okay, um... Catherine Howell, you there? Let me see you. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I do. Yep.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
What are your thoughts?
Um, so, um, in general, I, um, I'm supportive of this project, um, I I have noticed the building falling into increasing disrepair, and I think a repair while maintaining the character of that lovely old building would be great. Um, I also think that we really need more diversity of housing here in Manchester, we don't just need another large, single-family mansion with a carriage house on site, we need places where young families can come that are smaller units, um, so I support the diversity of housing as well. Uh, but, you know, that said, I, I take, um, the concerns that I've heard from people who live in the neighborhood very seriously. I mean, I drive up there all the time to take my kids to sailing in the summer, and I know that's an extremely dangerous intersection, um. That said, I'm not sure that it is necessarily zoning's purview to, um, deal in super-depth with the, uh, traffic and, and intersection issues, I mean, maybe there's an opportunity for us to fix that intersection, which needs to be fixed anyway. Um, I agree with prior suggestions that, you know, there could be a compromise here in terms of potentially reducing the number of units, or reducing the total density of the multifamily, um, proposal, um, to something that makes a little more sense for the space, um, and would alleviate some of the concerns over, um, traffic and parking. Um, I do support the idea of getting a traffic study done, and I also would, um, put an open question to our, um, chairperson, um, on whether we need a town... on whether we need a town council opinion on this changing of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming and not allowed use.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I can't, I can't talk. Unmuted. Yeah. There. I don't, I don't know what's wrong. I don't, I don't think we need town, a ruling from town council. I think it's within the bylaws that we have to make a determination of, as a board, if we feel it's appropriate to go from one non-conforming use to another. So we need to discuss that.
Okay.
Brian.
There, I couldn't find the button. Generally, I support the project. I think that the applicant has shown a lot of faith and I think he's, I think it's a great repurposing of a project, a property that's going to go into disrepair at some point. Obviously, it's not going to be an inn. And with the price point, whatever it is right now, anyone who's going to buy it as an inn is going to have to operate it for twelve months. So, and that's allowed. So for people, you know, we are living in the past. If you think this is going to suggest, suggest that this is going to stay a three or four month billing, I think that with the applicant living on site as an owner occupied, I think that gives a lot of credibility. I think he's going to be very careful as to who he selects for his neighbors. I think that the neighbors themselves are going to look at that as a neighborhood as opposed to a a transient population. They're going to, they're going to understand the traffic problems. They're going to understand the parking. They're going to understand these things as opposed to people coming in for the weekend. Just, they're not going to have this sense of ownership that a resident will. As Catherine pointed out, I mean, one of the mandates of this town is to increase rental housing and to increase. Okay, so to question if six units is going to impact the school, that's irrelevant at this point. We need more rental housing. And my understanding is that Nick's units, although might not be, might not fall into the realm of the state guidelines of affordable, are certainly attainable and are certainly family-friendly. I do hear the issues of traffic. I do. But for the most part, until, I just, okay, maybe a traffic study is in order at this point. But I think it's a good project. And, you know, there was some, I've read where people are concerned about additional traffic down to Tuck's Point. Well, I don't think these people are going to, you know, again, these people are going to be pulling into the driveways and want to stay home. The transient nature of an inn, people are coming and going all the time. I think when people get home, they're going to get home. So for the most part, you know, I hear all the concerns. I'm just not convinced. So I think at this point, I think it's a good project.
Thank you. John Benares.
Hello, yes. Overall, I do support the rehab of this property. Frankly, I'm tired of seeing it dilapidated for all these years. And I always wondered how it was in operation for such a long time. I agree that it would not be financially feasible for someone to come in and renovate the property and attempt to operate it as an end if it's just on a seasonal basis. I think this is a great opportunity for this structure to be repurposed as a multifamily property. And I agree that there's a big difference between people who actually live there as less seized versus people who come and visit, different people who come and visit every weekend where they're arriving. They don't know the area. They don't know where to park. So I think there's a difference there in the impact of the traffic in the parking situation that some of the residents have brought to light. And I do understand and sympathize with some of their objections. But overall, I think that it would be a great addition to the area as a multifamily property.
Thank you. I'll just give some very brief comments. I, I.
Sorry, can I interrupt you?
No, I need to talk first and then I'll let you respond.
I'm very sorry.
Okay, yeah. We're getting input from the board and then we'll throw it back to you to respond to what the citizens have said and what we've said. Okay. Thanks. So it's, I certainly feel it makes sense to put it to a better use than what it is today. I have a significant concern regarding the board approving a six-unit apartment building when the planning board and the town in Manchester has never voted to allow a six-unit building. We go up to four units in the general district. So I have a serious concern that it's really outside of our spoke to approve something that's never been contemplated as allowed within our bylaws. Now I will throw it back to Russ and me.
Right. Russ, do you mind? May I?
Yes, I'm the one to address that. You know, I heard comments from other council about the case law. So this is probably, this is definitely not the place to debate case law. You know, that's stuff we do in front of a judge who gets to make the decision on it. I think it's suffice to say that I disagree with my colleague and I'm aware of the case law. And I note that Manchester's bylaw, most importantly, allows for this board to change from one non-conforming use to another. There are lots of cases, there are cases that uphold a town's right to restrict that and say, no, you can't change from one non-conforming use to another. But our bylaw chose, the town meeting decided not to do that and to give this board more flexibility. So I understand the case law and I'm not opposed to going to town council. If the board so chooses, I'm used to just doing that. It happens all the time. It's up to you. But my understanding of the case law is that completely supports this board's authority to make this change if it finds that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's our position on that.
May I, Russ, can I say something?
Yes, of course.
I hope I'm not making a mistake here, but hey, I made a point. All right, so first of all, thank you for everybody's comments. I know it's, change is tough for anybody. It was tough sitting here, listening to all the people that could possibly be your potential neighbors tell you how they don't want you there. Not me personally, don't want the project there. I understand. I've heard your concerns. I think some of them are valid. I think some of them are, can be mitigated. I understand everything everyone's saying. I can, I can actually feel the room. So if it's okay, I don't know if this is appropriate for me to do, but I also feel like the board seems to want the project and the board likes the project. And I almost, I don't want to put the board in the position, support this right now with all these people, neighbors who have been there for years, 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 really hating it. I think it's almost unfair to ask for them to approve it right now. So what I'd like to do, if it's possible, I'd like to go back, not necessarily to the drawing board, but I'd like to take all the concerns and all the things that I've heard from my neighbor, my potential neighbors, people in the town. I'd like to take all the feedback that I have and maybe come back in February with a modification for what I'd like to do that addresses some of these questions, that addresses some of these issues, further mitigates problems with parking to the degree that I can and still keep it as close to what I want to do as possible. So basically what I'm saying is, hey folks, you want to get back together next month? And see if I can throw something that's a little more palatable. Because I really like to do this. I think that I have, still have the greatest intentions. I'd still like to be as transparent as possible. I still want to live in the back and be on site. And I will take all your input into consideration. You, most of you have my phone number and most of you may have my emails. Please reach out directly if you'd like. I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability, but I'd like to maybe present something that is different than what I'm asking for right this second, if that's okay. I don't know if I presented appropriately, boy, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're asking us to continue the application to the February meeting?
Okay.
We are. I interpret it that way. Yes, we're asking for.
All right. I should have let Russ talk. I'm sorry, everybody.
I will then make a motion to continue.
Second.
Well, I got to say it first, Brian. I move to continue the application, the Nicholas Herraris MAC Holding Services LLC for a special permit under section six point one point two, seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to alter, expand, or change an existing non-conforming hotel slash inn and single-family residential dwelling use to a non-conforming six-unit multifamily and single-family dwelling use in accordance with the plans at Two Harbors Street, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty-Five, in District E, filed with the town clerk on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. And that continuance will be on what's the date of the February meeting? Do I, Brian, do you second that?
I don't want to second it now, no.
Would somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, James Mitchell's second.
Yes, in favor, approved.
Okay, okay. Brian?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Yes, approved.
And Sarah says yes. So I will sign it on behalf of the board and then we will send it to Mr. Brown for signature.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Now we are moving on to we have one, two, three, four, five, six applica, six separate applications for special permits at six separate non-conforming lots with non-conforming structure on Sandpiper Lane. Now, it's my understanding that there is a desire on part of the applicant to perhaps continue some of these special permits.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, I represent Binabai LLC with respect to this application. There are six applications. We only would like to go forward with the application for lot number four and requesting a continuance on the applications with respect to lot number one, lot number three, lot number five, lot number seven, and lot number nine. And the reason is that we are speaking with the neighbors, more particularly, most particularly the neighbors above have concerns about their view, the impediment to their view. And we're looking at design changes to minimize the impact on their view. And I think that we're going to be able to work that out. So I've told the neighbors that I would continue for, to the next meeting, give us time to make some modifications to the plan.
Okay, then I'll start dealing with these applications by going through the five firsts that you wish to continue and then we'll go on to the last one. So I make a motion to continue the application of Binabai LLC for a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to alter and expand existing non-conforming, single-family structure setbacks, building height, floor area location, parking and lot coverages by structure and impervious materials in accordance with the plans submitted with the application at one Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty-Five, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. For the application at three Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty-Six, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteen, twenty twenty. Same application on, at five Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty-Seven, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. And the same application at seven Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Seventy-One, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteen, twenty twenty. And in addition, at nine, nine Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Seventy, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteen, twenty twenty to be continued February seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a second? James, you should shut second. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Catherine, Catherine? Yes. James? Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
And I approve. So we'll continue those five. Okay. Now I will introduce the application of Binabai LLC for a modification of a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to alter and expand existing non-conforming, single-family structure setbacks, building height, floor area, location, parking and lot coverages by structure and impervious materials in accordance with the plans submitted with the application at four Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty-Eight, in District G, filed with the town clerk on December sixteen, twenty twenty. Mr. Brown, you want to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I do. Members of the board, I represent Binabai LLC with respect to the application to change the, alter a non-conforming structure. Only we're altering a non-conforming structure. Actually, we're going to, the application is to modify a existing special permit. As the board may remember, we were before, I think the board in August, I believe it was, and the board approved a special permit to construct a two-story, one-bedroom structure on this lot for which we also received CONCOM approval. We, after some consideration, we have, are coming back to ask the board so that we can alter the orientation of that structure. We're not changing the square footage. We're not changing the building, the design or the square footage of the building. We're changing a deck design, but the change is de minimis. I believe we changed the way we're laying out the deck so that it's, now the deck is pointing towards the south. But we're largely doing this really at the request of the neighbor David Bell, who, you know, you may remember, was unhappy with the way we originally positioned the building running parallel to his house. So we, after some consideration, decided that it would be better overall to accommodate Mr. Bell. It was of little impact to our design plans. So we're back before you. We've already gotten CONCOM approval for this repositioning. So we've already cleared that hurdle. And we're asking that the board approve this repositioning as really a betterment of the previous special permit given and. betterment of the previous special permit given, and we're going to at least make one more, I believe, one more person happy. Hopefully, uh, Mr. Johnson is gonna agree with me. At least he had to represent Mr. Bell. So, um, that's pretty much it, which it's a single-family house. Um, so it's entitled to the special perfection protections afforded single-family houses, so they get a um, a more liberal standard applied to altering these types of structures.
Does, do members of the board have any questions?
Not at this time.
I'm okay for now.
Um, Mr. Johnson, did you wish to speak? You're muted.
There we go. Okay. Very good. Chuck Johnson from CG Johnson Engineering. I was the design civil engineer for Arthur Noonar from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen uh, for his septic upgrade. And then in December two thousand eighteen, that's when, uh, Jeff Karpowicz from Binabah LLC purchased the property. And I am, as, as Russ has said, I am, uh, currently working, uh, for Dave Bell. I'm taking care of his septic upgrade. And, uh, for purposes of a little, my, my focus really is on Sandpiper Lane itself. I did, uh, submit a transmittal and a discussion plan, uh, for that uh, for this project. The property in nineteen forty-two was a total of, uh, nine, nine lots. And then in nineteen fifty-four, that's when Sandpiper Lane, as a private way, was created as a subdivision plan. It stars, it starts at as ten feet wide at Raymond Street and then widens to fifteen feet wide. David Bell's primary concern is that vehicles are often parked within that fifteen-foot-wide, uh, right-of-way and could obstruct potentially, uh, Manchester emergency vehicles. And so, in addition to the fact that often cars are parked within the right-of-way, also the right-of-way is not well-defined. And so I prepared a discussion plan. And I'm not sure if the board has had a chance to look at that plan.
Yes.
So the, uh, so what Dave Bell, as part of his septic upgrade, what Dave is going to have me do is, uh, to show that he will be having installed four granite bounds put uh, on his property, on property lines and things, uh, to help define as well the right-of-way. And the request is for Mr. Karpowicz to have three granite bounds installed in the locations as shown on my discussion plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions if any board members have any, or Russ does.
Do you have any thoughts in this, Mr. Brown?
I haven't had a chance to talk to my client about installing stone bounds. Uh, and we're not, we're, we're not necessarily opposed, uh, to demarcating the way, provided, of course, it's not an impediment to actually traveling over the way. Um, uh, you know, that may serve a good use. We're, we're certainly interested in making sure that people don't block that way. So we're positioning the, all of these buildings, you know, you'll see in the other um, application before, they are being repositioned really to accommodate for car, for parking so that they're not parking in the way. So that is a goal that my client has, um, since he owns most of the properties down there. We don't want to block the way. And we certainly don't. We, we respect Mr. Bell's rights to travel over the way and have no intent to allow anybody to block that way. So I guess we'd have to, you know, see what those bounds are. I don't necessarily have an objection to that, but I'd have to ask my client to opine on it since he's both the contractor and, you know, in the end, it's his decision.
Yeah, my, my concern with this plan is it appears to me that Mr. Bell is planning to put granite bounds within the right-of-way.
He's proposing to put granite bounds at the at the points of, uh, intersection of his property line and the right-of-way.
But they're within the right-of-way, and the whole issue on this case has been with respect to the right-of-way, so he's putting stuff, he's doing property within the right-of-way and not leaving the right-of-way open.
No, the, the intention is for these granite bounds, which are four inches by four inches with a drill hole in the middle. Okay, uh, to be flush with the ground surface when it's all done. Not to be raised above the ground surface, because of course the concern would be during the winter time, you don't want to have plows, uh, knocking into the bounds. So instead of having like a railroad spike or an iron rod or some iron pipe flush with the ground surface, uh, we would want something like a granite bound, which is typical for a subdivision, uh, flush with the ground surface. And to give folks an idea, the cost of a granite bound is, uh, list price is forty-three dollars.
So, m- may I suggest something, um, uh, Mrs. Chairman, I, uh, just to, uh, for the sake of efficiency. I think that, um, this might be a better discussion in the context of our other applications, because as we're putting this entire project together with all six, uh, units, we have to, we're going to address road maintenance, and we're probably looking at forming a homeowners association for the road maintenance, a formal entity, so that we can pool our costs and charge all the, we have an organized approach to the maintenance of this road, and so there's a conversation I, we're going to want to have with Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bell, so that we can get organized in this issue. I think that all of our interests are aligned on it. So I don't want to burden, I don't think that we need to burden the board at this time. Um, if we disagree later on, it has to become an issue. We can, we can bring it up in the context of the future special permitting, but I don't think it needs to hold up tonight. And I hope Mr. Johnson agrees with me on that.
Russ, that's wise counsel. That's totally reasonable. That, that totally makes sense. That's fine.
Comments from the board? Do we want to go ahead and consider this, or do we want to continue it? With the others?
Excuse me, uh, as far as the right-of-way, that was litigated months ago, I thought, you know, uh, and the, uh, this new proposal doesn't impede or doesn't affect, uh, that, the access into the site, I say we go ahead with, on this one as opposed to continuing it. And then, as Russ points out, uh, as part of the, the, the next applications, uh, with the improvement of the roadway, that, that becomes, uh, the right venue then, but I, I don't see why we can't, uh, vote on this particular application. My, my opinion.
Um, I actually have a, a preference for considering these as a whole, as a whole group for consistency purposes. I think there, it's pretty much the same thing that's being requested at each site, and I would prefer to make all of the decisions at once.
I agree with, um, the applicants' counsel and the idea of doing this all at once, just for consistency.
John?
Uh, I'm honestly not adverse to voting on the, the, the one application tonight and then continuing the rest to next month's meeting.
What would the applicant like to do?
Well, I, I, um, we're elected to proceed on this because, uh, we believe this is the non-controversial unit, and we thought that it would be easier just to get this out of the way. Um.
What's the status of the appeal of this decision? Our
Filed an appeal on the decision. So, uh, if we, uh, that would also, um, I think be beneficial, because the issuance of a special permit, I think, would moot that litigation. It certainly wouldn't, if you issued a special permit or modification, um, that litigation would be mooted, and then Mr. Bell, of course, would be free to appeal this, but, um, I believe this solves the problem for this unit with Mr. Bell, and so I would hope that we won't have litigation. So we're here really because we're hoping that this resolves litigation, you know, the expense of it is not really worth it. So we, I think that this removes, uh, an obstacle and an impediment for everyone, and it resolves a sore spot for Mr. Bell. We're interested in moving with as much, um, you know, cooperation as possible, because we have five more to go.
Are you okay, Catherine?
I'm sorry?
Are you okay? Are you okay voting on this tonight?
Sure.
I'm okay too.
Okay. I moved to approve the application of Binabah LLC for a modification of a special permit under section six point one point two and seven point five point two. Where the original, whoa, I don't know when it was approved, um, or other relief is maybe necessary to alter and expand a nonconforming, single-family structure on a nonconforming lot, um, in accordance with plans submitted with the application at four Sandpiper Lane, Assessors Map Number One, Lot Number Sixty Eight in District G, filed with the Town Clerk on December sixteenth, twenty twenty, based on the finding that the modification of the special permit is, um, in harmony with the purpose and intent of this bylaw and is not more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure um, or the prior, um, special permit issued, um, with respect to, um, the various factors required for a special permit. Do you know when that's, other special permit was issued?
Yes, um, I I believe I have it here on my.
I have the decision, but I don't have it stamped as when it was filed.
We made the application on seven July, I believe. I know it was an August meeting, so I, I think it was issued in, um.
It was the August twenty-seventh meeting. It was approved at the August twenty-seventh meeting. Hold on a minute.
See here. I have a copy here. Let's see, the decision was issued and signed on ten, seven, twenty twenty.
So this is a modification to the special permit granted on ten, seven, twenty twenty. Do I have a second? Second.
Beat you to it, John.
I had a, I had a question.
Wait for that.
I'm a, I'm a little confused. Are we voting for these bounds? Or we've only to have that deck expanded or, or reoriented, or both?
No, we're not voting on the bounds. That's deferred to the next segment, and Mr. Johnson agreed.
Okay, so this is just on the deck?
This is number four Sandpiper, where we previously approved it, um, at, uh, ninety-degree angle to Sandpiper Lane, and it's now parallel to Sandpiper Lane. It is virtually in the same location that the original structure was in.
Thank you.
Any other member of the board have questions? Concerns?
No. I'm good.
You're good, Catherine? Okay. I'll move to a vote. Brian?
Yes, approved.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Yes, John?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Then with five out of zero. Who is going to write it? Oh, I'll write it, because I wrote the last one.
Perfect.
Who will review it?
I'll review it.
Brian will review, okay.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
Night. Thank you.
You know, I came all organized and then I get disorganized.
Did you accomplish anything tonight?
Yeah. A special.
Yeah.
My agenda.
Kind of missed Mr. Diedrich's, uh, council this evening. Very quiet.
Okay.
He's already signed off, hasn't he?
He's gone.
Yeah.
Feet, feet, and get out of here.
He's so happy that the Board of Selectmen is finding a new member. Um, so now I'm going to move to the administrative matters. Um, at our last meeting at, um, when we reviewed the application for two Tanglewood Road, um, we approved it, but, um, with the caveat that we wanted a response from the Conservation Commission, um, regarding whether or not there were wetlands. And Chris Bertoni, um, the conservation, um, person said that she had, um, I guess a building permit was submitted in October for this property, um, and they, um, and that she had reviewed it and that there are no left wetlands. It's uplands with not covered under the, um, wetland protection. Everyone good with that?
Sure.
Plus?
Next one is four Crafts Court, which is a special permit we approved, and I believe everyone received a copy of this e- email. I hope so. Um, where they have, so the question is, they're, they're making a, what they're calling a minor modification, and they're asking us whether we will consider it a minor modification, um, or whether we need to go back into a public hearing. hearing. And it's my understanding what they are doing is they are want to add an exterior bulkhead, which is I think three feet by five feet. Can't read it, I just put a little picture. And they're not going any further into the setback than the, the house corner that's already there and was approved and they're going to take a foot off of the garage accessory structure in the back to shorten it from 24 feet to 23 feet so that they stay within the 15% lot coverage. So do we feel this is minor and that we can just go to the building inspector and say this is within reason of the special permit we granted?
I think so, yes.
Do people remember this project?
That's the house that had the tree growing through the middle of us. It was.
No, this was the house that had trees in the front that the neighbors didn't want cut down and a tree in the back that was being removed. He was at the end of the street.
Right, and the ancillary building was off to the left and in the back.
Yeah. Putting in a two-car garage.
Yeah.
Okay, Catherine?
Are we keeping you up?
No, I'm just, I was just was trying to remember this hearing and was thinking, is this the one where there was a lot of neighbor concern?
There was, there was, there was. On one corner. One corner. It backs up. Woodhome.
That's right, so there's no neighbors to the rear of the property, correct? It was, I remember it was forest and wetlands in one corner.
Yeah, the Singleton's were behind there.
Yeah, the rear, it was the plumbing building behind.
I don't see a major issue, but I know.
I was able on this one.
I mean, nobody had an issue with anything.
Yeah, there's no, there's no neighbor.
No, the only issue was the one on Woodhome who was concerned about the wetlands and the locusts, what is it, locust streets or whatever they were.
And we're moving closer into the, we're moving further away from the setbacks now too. We're taking that foot off the bag.
The change, the change that's, yeah, you're right. And the change that occurring, is occurring has nothing to do with the wetlands corner. The other end of the prop.
I'm fine.
It's not in the 112 zone.
What do you think, Catherine?
Fine.
Let's move on, let's move on.
I will, I will contact. Building, building. Next. What's wrong? Yeah. The, so the next thing I wanted to touch a little bit on is the decision writing we're doing. I, I think that we're finding that more and more people are coming forward with respect to our decisions and trying to pick holes in them. We've had one, one special permit that we issued, that we issued and attached to the decision were, were plans that included some landscaping, but our decision was only with respect to the structure itself and in a butter is trying to come forward and trying to force them to do the landscaping. So I think that when we're discussing things at meetings and when we write the decisions, we need to be, make, be very specific as to what it covers.
Sarah, can you tell us which decision this was?
48 Central.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember that one.
That was the one on the harbor with the garage we didn't approve and so he took the garage out. And
Oh, okay.
There was some landscaping along the harbor. But he's waiting until he builds the garage. Didn't need to come to us for approval. And I basically felt that we didn't, it wasn't an issue because the special permit hasn't even expired. But it's just what people can do.
I've, I've written a few, you know, a handful of decisions and I've never included a landscaping plan with the decision. Was this a special condition where a decision was submitted with additional documentation?
No, I think that what happens is it's often that the plans we receive are, are for mixed use of various boards. So it's also being used for Conservation Commission. That's what complicates things.
I can speak to this. I've been, I've been better for us. I've been keeping a close eye on this because I actually spoke against the project before. This is the reason I got on this board was because I was frustrated and I reread and read the minutes again and again and again. And part of the issue that I have is that the applicant made a point of stating that he was going to decrease the pervious or the impervious by ripping up all that asphalt. James, you actually thought it was a great idea and it was, so my question is, does that become part of the the decision when, when, when the board made decisions based on the overall, no, we didn't, no, yes, I understand, wasn't.
I don't want to discuss this to a great extent, Brian.
Okay, no, I'm just.
If we want to have conditions in our decisions, then we need to be very explicit regarding what the conditions are and they need to be incorporated into the motion. If we talk about something like landscaping and we want it actually to be implemented, then we need to make sure it gets into the motion and the decision.
Okay.
Okay, but we can discuss a lot of things, a lot of conditions and not incorporate them into the decision if we don't want to. And we just need to be clear. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, I think typically something like a landscaping plan, we leave it pretty vague because when an applicant comes before us, you know, their mind is, they're concerned about their, the structural, you know, issues and that they have to encounter in the additions that they're putting on, et cetera. So the landscaping always comes last and so we always leave it up to them and their neighbors to figure that out.
Right, and I think that the one exception I can recall is, was the tennis courts up on Proctor. Where we actually incorporated a landscaping plan into the decision.
I'm just, again, let's talk generalities here, not this particular project. It's been my experience that one of the things that becomes a cornerstone of a decision or questions is the decrease and we've always, I mean, every, the pervious material.
Yep.
Okay. You following this?
We, we need to, if, if we're going to discuss items like impervious material and we want it to be implemented as part of a special permit, then we need to make it a condition. Okay, that's what I'm saying. So that's what I'm saying. We need to tighten up how we're writing our decisions to make sure that we're incorporating those aspects that we really wanted incorporated.
Okay.
When we do. Does that make sense? Okay. Next thing was the overview of the state 40B handbook and, and I'm not going to be super long on this because I know it's getting late. But I looked at, there's several things I've been thinking about. One is in the handbook on page three and four. There's a lot of things that we need to, to take into consideration and it talks a little bit about what does a comprehensive permit include and the interesting piece is that the ZBA's jurisdiction includes zoning, subdivision regulations, other types of local bylaws or ordinances or regulations, historic district bylaw, earth removal, stormwater management or local wetlands regulations. So when we look at this 40B, we have to be prepared to look at the entire subset of the zoning bylaws, even those segments that are traditionally planning, where planning board is a special permitting authority. So, so we need to think about that. The other thing we need to keep in mind is if, if it's, if it's denied or conditional approval, then the applicant can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. And they're not unlike, they're not likely to, to, they're likely to overrule us and go let the project go forward. Because we don't meet the statutory requirements, but if the ZBA approves a permit with conditions and the developer appeals, then the standards of review are very different. And he, he has to prove in court that it makes, the, the conditions make the project uneconomic. So I think that we, you need to look at pages three and four and, and I think the other thing I wanted to bring to people's attention is under the zoning bylaws, we can put in conditions if they're appropriate and reasonable such as greater than minimum setback requirements, installation of screening, fencing, et cetera. Modifications to the exterior features or appearance of the structure and we can limit the size, number of occupants, method of time of operation. And we can regulate location of access drives and other traffic features, which we normally don't do on a individual property. And we can also force them to install devices to limit noise, light, odor and objectionable aspects of the use. So we need to keep, keep thinking of those conditions when we're doing regular special permits, but also remember that, that that is something we should be looking at.
And as much as they're going with this lift program, I mean, they're allegedly, I don't know where they are at this point negotiating with the Board of Selectmen. Do, can we, they're gonna, the selectmen will put some conditions on it. Can then we layer additional conditions on that?
Yes, we, we, we are bound by any conditions that the Board of Selectmen put on it. We can't change those, but we can, we can impose additional conditions.
Now, the Board of Selectmen are basically negotiating those conditions, but they're not, there's, they're not doing any, the public hearings falls into the ZBA's purview.
So they're having weekly meetings with public input. But it's really the zoning Board of Appeals, public hearings are what count. And, and so, you know, we, you know, my thought is, you know, you, you take input from people and also ask for possible solution. And then, you know, yeah, Becky?
May I, may I jump in for a moment?
You may.
What the, what, if, if the Board of Selectmen are able to come up with an agreement, the types of stipulations that the Board of Selectmen put on are much broader picture. We do not get involved. The Board of Selectmen will not get involved with the types of decisions that are in the purview of the ZBA. That's not what, what the Board of Selectmen will do. Ours, ours will be much bigger picture. You all are doing the much finer tuned, nuanced, very important aspects. Does that clarify it all?
So they're just talking like you're gonna talk to them about quantity units, the breakup of the ones, twos, three bedrooms and that kind of thing. And then the actual permitting then comes back down to the ZBA.
The, 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 the aspects that pertain to the bylaws are, we don't deal with those. Does that, does that clear it up at all?
Yes, clear as mud.
That's my MO there, Brian.
You know, I, I think people need to spend time looking at the bylaws because one of the, one of the things that's in the subdivision planning section of the bylaws, there's all sorts of things about egress and, and roads and how long they can be access roads and all that sort of stuff. We don't normally deal with that, but we'll be expected to if this ever comes before us. So we need to understand what we, what normally is required in the town bylaws. And then decide whether any of that applies to a situation before us.
Becky, do you have any sense of timing at this point?
No.
I know that they've scheduled weekly meetings for the next two months. And I don't think they're negotiating anything. I think they're still getting input. So it's gonna be a while.
Okay.
Unless, unless the developer gets tired of working with the town and decides to go direct to the state, they could do that too.
Well, it's gotta go through us first though.
No, no. So once the, if, if the Board of Selectmen is, is, is able to negotiate with the developer, once that negotiation is done, it goes to the state for certification. If they're not successful in the negotiations, the developer goes to the state for certification. Once it's certified by the state, it comes to us. So the state is basically saying, yeah, we think this is a reasonable project. Which is why it's so hard to deal with.
Indeed.
Anything else? So continue looking at this handbook and just kind of, it'll take us a while to get up to speed on.
No quizzes?
Yeah, we'll talk about it each meeting, just a little bit, just to kind of see where we're headed on.
I want to go home and go to bed.
Is there, is there anything else? Scott? Then I move to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
I am second. Paul and Susan.
Yes.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.